Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started. First of all, I just want to thank you for coming to the candidate orientation that we're putting on today. This is really about you guys and getting you the information that you need and trying to address and answer all of your questions. Because I know there are a lot of questions that you all have. There's a lot of issues, you know, with the city, with finances, and so we're going to cover some of those things today. And really, we put together today's agenda based on the feedback that we received from you on the topics that you wanted to hear about. The other thing I would say is, is thank you for running. This can be a very difficult and challenging position, and we're very happy that there are citizens out there who want to take this on because it is such a challenging position to be in. You really have to make some difficult decisions sometimes, and so, thank you for being involved in the process. I am the Reno City Manager. My name is Andrew Klinger. I've been here for 10 months in the city. Prior to that, I actually worked for the governor for six years, started as the governor's budget director, right as revenue peaked, and left right as revenue hit the bottom. So, went through that challenge, and now I'm here in the city of Reno, putting together what I think is a great team to help the city manage the challenges that the city faces, and you are all well aware of what those challenges are. You're going to hear some of those challenges today. You're also going to hear on some of the solutions that we're putting together to deal with those challenges. As I stated, this session is meant to handle your questions, so if you have questions as we go, please feel free to ask those questions. If you do have additional questions later on that don't get answered today, we would ask that you address those questions to the city manager's office, and I'll give you a number that you can call if you do have additional questions. It's (334) 2020. So if after today's session, if you have follow-up questions, or just questions in general over the next month or so that you have, please feel free to call us. We'll direct you to the appropriate department to get your questions answered. We did conduct a survey, as I stated, and by far, the two most important topics that we got back, that everybody wanted to hear about, was the city's financial situation and also about public safety. So we do have presentations today that are going to address both of those issues. To start off today, we're actually going to have Chris Good, our Director of Neighborhood Services. He's going to give you just an overview of the city. We have Chief Hernandez, who is going to give you an overview of the city's fire department. And then we actually have Deputy Chief Mike Wan, who's going to, or, sorry, Dave Evans. Mike was here last night.[190.01][190.01](Laughter). Mike did a stellar job, by the way, so he set the bar high, so, yeah. Deputy Chief Evans is going to give you an overview of the Reno Police Department. And then we have Robert Chisel, who is our Finance Director, and Kate Thomas, who is our Budget Director, are going to give you an overview of the city's finances. So unless you have questions of me at this time, I'm actually going to turn it over to Chris to give you an overview of the city.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Andrew. We are going to get to those topics that you asked for, public safety and finances, but we thought it might be worthwhile to quickly give you an overview of the city government and the basis upon which it functions. My name is Chris Good. I'm the Director of Neighborhood Services for the city. Neighborhood Services includes the Neighborhood Advisory Boards, and that's the two staff liaisons for the Neighborhood Advisory Boards, Lisa Mann and Barbara DiCiano. They're the two who kind of put this afternoon's program together as well, so I want to thank them for that. Neighborhood Services also includes the Reno Direct Call Center. You can call or email Reno Direct for anything you need from the city. My department also includes media relations and television production, and the website and social media. So we're very active out of Neighborhood Services. With that said, let's take a quick overview regarding how city government works in Reno. We are established by a charter. So you can think of the city's charter like the Constitution for the federal government. And you can find the charter online. I would encourage you to do that. You can get to it if you go to Reno.gov and look under Departments and go to the City Clerk's Office, because, as you'll hear in a few moments, the City Clerk's duties include keeping all the records, all the records, historical and otherwise, for the city. So if you go to the City Clerk's page on Reno.gov, there's a link right there to the municipal code. If you open that up, you'll see that the first chapter of the municipal code is the charter. So I do encourage you to take a look at that. The charter was established in 1903, and there's an interesting little story there. We were originally chartered in 1899, but the charter was taken away. We were de-incorporated because there weren't enough people, the population wasn't large enough in Reno at that time. But that changed by 1903, and the legislature established the charter for us in 1903. It's been amended a number of times, obviously, in that last 100 years, but that charter has stayed with us through that whole time. But it's important to understand that it was the legislature that established us. The legislature granted us the city charter. So the city is the daughter of state government, as it were. We only have rights and authority that is conferred upon the city by the state government. The state government could, again, un-incorporate us should they so choose. We only exist by the grace of the state government. The charter sets forth all the rules, how we elect our officials, how we do contracts, how we pass resolutions and ordinances, all, you know, who the officials, not individually who they are, what the officials are, and what the duties of the officials are. That's all laid out in the charter, so anytime we come to a basic fundamental question about what we can and can't do, you always go back to that charter. That's the founding document. An important point, last point about this before we go to the next slide, is that broadly speaking, there are two types of city governments in the country, those with home rule and those without. We do not have home rule. What does that mean? Home rule, if a city has home rule, basically, simply, it means that the city council, the legislature, legislative branch of that local government, has any rights that aren't precluded by state law. So unless the state law says you can't do this, or the US Constitution says you can't do it, they have the authority to do it, to pass the laws. They could make it 75 miles an hour speed limit on Virginia if they wanted to. In a non-home-rule city like Reno, and like all the cities in Nevada, it's the other way around. We only have the rights that are authorized and granted to us by the state legislature. So it's more restrictive. That's why, that's one reason why it's so important that the local governments have a close relationship with representatives in state government, that we have to work well together on a regular basis. The powers granted to the city council by charter, there's a little section in the charter that explicitly says, "These are the powers granted to the council." And basically, again, I would encourage you to take a look at this because this is very simplified, but it's the power to buy and sell real property, to issue business licenses for revenue, to have franchise agreements with utilities and transportation. And here's my favorite part of the charter is that it provides for a municipal band. I don't know how many city charters in the country provide for a municipal band, but there it is explicitly laid out, that the city council may appropriate money to pay for and to promote a municipal band. And then, one sentence gives them the power, police power, fire, traffic, health, and sanitary. I'll read you that. It says, "The power to enact and enforce any police, fire, traffic, health, sanitary, or other measure which does not conflict with state law." So again, we go back to that restrictive nature of our charter. Our charter sets us up with the council-manager form of government. Now, often when people think about city governments, they think about large cities, particularly the ones back east, New York, Chicago, Detroit, Atlanta, and in those cities, they have a strong mayor. That's an older form of local government than a council-manager form. In a strong mayor city, stereotypically, when a new mayor gets elected, he or she comes in and wipes out the management of the city, puts in his or her own supporters, the people who helped that person get elected, the people who have supported each other politically over the years, and we have political appointees doing the day-to-day functions of the city. That's not how it works in a council-manager form of government. And you can see, there are advantages and disadvantages to these different types. In the strong mayor form, the thought was that the electorate has a direct control, and they put new people in office, and that's going to change how garbage gets collected in Ward III, when you put someone who's interested in how garbage gets collected on the city council. And that has its advantages, as I say, but those disadvantages include the political machines that we saw rise at the end of the 1800s in the larger cities back east. "To the victor goes the spoils," was the theory, and that led to what was perceived, and often was, corruption. It doesn't have to go that way, but often it did lead to corruption. So that led to a new movement in the early 1900s of the rise of the technocrats, the idea of scientific management. That idea produced this council-manager form of government. The thought here is, the people who get elected are responsive to the voters, of course, and they set policies in place about what direction the city should go in. But the day-to-day operations are carried out by trained, professional, objective people who are professional city administrators, like in our case, Andrew Klinger, our city manager. This goes back to the concept of scientific management that was big in the early 1900s. This became a very popular way of setting up local governments, particularly after World War I in the United States. And today, about 40% of all local governments in the US with populations of over 2,500 people are set up with this council-manager form of government. And again, the thought here is that it's like if the city were a ship, the city council and the mayor would be the captain of the ship, and they would say, "We want to go over here toward that island." And we administrators, who work for the city manager, we put our hands on the oars, and we row, and we go in that direction. We do the day-to-day work to get the city in the policy direction that the council and the mayor set, but we're not political partisans. We don't stump for candidates, like you would in a strong mayor form of government. The idea is to be apolitical, objective administrators, and that's the basic idea behind a council-manager form of government. So the council establishes policies, passes ordinances and resolutions, appropriates the money, the power of the purse, that's very important, of course, and they have two employees, the city council and the mayor, two employees, the city manager, whom you met, Andrew Klinger, and the city clerk. And that's all laid out in that city charter. The charter lays out the elected officials. It says we'll have one mayor, six city council members, as I'm sure you're familiar. It also says that there will be one municipal court judge and as many additional municipal court judges as the city council and the mayor determine is necessary. So right now, we have four municipal court judges. The other elected official described in the charter is our city attorney, John Cadlec. They're pictured on the right hand, on your right, as you look at the photographs there. And it's just interesting to point out, the city attorney, I always like to make this point, I worked in another city years ago where the city attorney was appointed by the city manager. It's different from here. Here, the city attorney is elected. Now, the city attorney advises the mayor and the city council on sometimes a daily basis, but certainly at all their meetings, where they make determinations, and they want to make a change to the proposed ordinance, they turn to the city attorney for legal advice and counsel. Well, who is the city attorney's client? I just find this an interesting question. The city attorney in our case is elected, so you could say that his, in this case, it's a he, his client is the voters of Reno, and that's appropriate and fine. But he also advises the administration, and he also advises the elected officials, and you can imagine, conflicts arising there, and I think that's interesting. In my experience back in a different state, in a smaller city, where the city attorney was appointed by the city manager, there arose a conflict because that our city attorney believed the city manager had done something illegal. It got to be a big ugly scandal and a mess, but the city attorney spent some of that time, while I was there, explaining to me, he was torn about who his client is. Is it the public? Is it the elected officials? Or is it the person who appointed him? So, in this case, let's go back to fundamentals here, our charter sets out that the city attorney is elected, so his client, in this case, is the electorate, the voters themselves. Let's go back to those two employees that the city council has, the city manager and the city clerk. The charter sets out the duties of the clerk. Lynette Jones is the current city clerk. She is responsible for running elections, for codification of all the ordinances that the city passes, that the council passes, for keeping of all the public records, as I mentioned, the collection of revenues, the parking permits and fees. She also runs the print shop that we have, in charge of council support and the appeals hearing. So if you've ever appealed a parking ticket, that's administered through the city clerk's office when you go and talk to the appeal officer about the parking ticket. In addition to these two employees, I'm about to get into what the city manager does in a moment, but before I do that, in addition to these two employees, the city council and the mayor also have advisory boards and commissions. These people aren't paid, they're not employees, they're volunteers. They're appointed by the mayor and the city council, and we have a number of boards and commissions. We have the Neighborhood Advisory Boards, who most people are familiar with, but we also have lots of specialized boards. We have the Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board. We have the Senior Services Advisory Board. We have Arts and Culture Advisory Board, Historic Preservation, and right on down the line. If you're interested in looking at those, you can see a comprehensive list of all of them, again, at Reno.gov, if you just look for Boards and Commissions, it's right there. Now, let's take a look at what the city manager at the city of Reno does. Now, I should have said this at the beginning of the presentation, every presentation you're going to see today is available online, again, at Reno.gov. If you go to the city manager's page, there are four presentations you're going to see today, and all four are available. So if you can't see, if you can't read this org chart here, take a look at it online, and you'll see. But basically, the city manager has a number of direct reports, and then they have people who report to them. There are two assistant city managers, one who oversees the public works and parks and rec, community development and redevelopment functions. The other assistant city manager oversees government affairs, that goes back to how important it is for us to have a good relationship with the state government. Then there's Neighborhood Services, that's me. The city council's agenda management and special projects out of the city manager's office, and then special events. Other people who report to the city manager include the administrative staff up on the 15th floor, that's where the city manager's office is. There's the Office of Management and Budget, which includes budget, of course, and also our federal grants and federal legislative affairs. That's out of the OMB. Now, please note that, different from some other organizations, our budget office is separate from our finance department. And that was put in place, actually relatively recently, in order to establish some additional checks and balances, so that they're looking at each other's work. And you're going to hear from the dynamic duo here of Kate Thomas and Robert Chisel, OMB and Finance, here a little bit later this afternoon. Then we have the Director of Finance and Administration, that's Robert Chisel. He oversees finance, of course, but also human resources and our IT department. And then we have the fire department, the public, and the police department, and you're going to hear from fire and police this afternoon as well. Every year, our city manager pulls our city council and mayor off for a special workshop to establish priorities for the coming fiscal year. Our fiscal year starts July 1, so we're approaching the beginning of the new fiscal year. In February, in fact, it was Leap Day, February 29, the mayor and council went off on a workshop and established these six priorities for the coming fiscal year. The first four of these are carryovers from the current fiscal year. Financial management, that's obviously a high priority for us, as well as many other local governments across the country these days. Financial management has been a big issue, quite obviously. Economic development is a big priority and goal for the mayor and council. Public safety remains a priority for our mayor and council, and arts and culture and special events. And then for next year, they added a special focus on senior services and accessibility. With that, that is a very brief overview of how the government is organized and how it works. I would just remind you, I might be repeating myself, but it all comes back to that charter, and I would encourage you to take a look at that city charter online. Now, there's a space at the end of our program for Q and A, so I'd like you to save your questions, if you have any, until we're done with the presentations, with the exception of the next presentation, because this afternoon at 2:30, there's a joint meeting between the city of Reno and Washoe County to discuss fire deconsolidation and the fire functions moving forward come the first of the new fiscal year. So Fire Chief Michael Hernandez is going to have to maybe leave this place early if we go a little bit overtime. So I'd like to introduce Fire Chief Hernandez, and encourage you to ask him your questions while you have him up here before he has to run. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. I am Mike Hernandez, Fire Chief, and I've got a brief PowerPoint that basically goes over what our department is, what we do, how we do it, how we're staffed, what our budget looks like. I could probably take up the entire two hours, just trying to address the variety of issues that are currently facing our department. And in a nutshell, I can tell you that we've got some serious challenges. This is a very difficult time for our organization, but we do have a plan in place, and our plan is centered on core service delivery to the citizens of Reno. We're zeroed in on that, and we're making sure that on July 1, the citizens of Reno will not see any type of difference in terms of service delivery. And then I'll hit probably the most common questions that I get asked every single, every day, almost, and then I'll take whatever questions you may have. So with that, what is the Reno Fire Department? Well, the Reno Fire Department is an all-hazards department, and what that means is that we are capable at present, and we will be capable in the future, of responding to all types of disasters, whether man-made or natural. Whether that's a significant EMS response, as we had in the Reno Air Race disaster, a conflagration like we had at the Collin and the Washoe Fire, or a day-to-day structure fire. Just last week, we had two concurrent structure fires, and we are building a fire service delivery model that is capable of handling two significant events at the same time. And then lastly, we do what we call our special operations, water rescue, high-angle rescue, confined space, and of course, hazardous materials. So that's kind of what we mean when I say we are an all-hazards, all-risk-management-type department. We can, you know, whatever Mother Nature throws at us, we are in some way, shape, or form prepared to respond to those type of events. Whatever, any type of natural, I'm sorry, man-made disaster, whether it's an 18-wheeler coming down I-80 that flips over and is loaded with gasoline, we are prepared to respond to those types of events. So what do we do? We do, you know, fire response, which is structural, wildland, vehicle, and chemical. EMS, we are part of a two-tiered EMS delivery system. We work in concert or in partners with REMZA. REMZA typically has anywhere between seven to nine ambulances, depending on how they up and downstaff their medical system at any given time. We have our stations strategically placed throughout the city. All of our personnel are trained to at least the intermediate level, the EMT intermediate level. We have approximately two dozen paramedics currently on staff that also ride the ambulance. So the most common question I get is, "Chief, why is it that when I picked up the phone and I call for a paramedic because my mom or dad or my brother or sister collapsed or fell or broke his leg, a fire truck showed up?" And the short answer is, we are generally closer in proximity to be able to provide that hands-on intervention-type therapy prior to the arrival of REMZA. Now, sometimes they get there before we do, they cancel us. Sometimes we get there before they do, and we recognize the need that there isn't an ambulance required, so we cancel them. Oftentimes, we arrive just slightly ahead of them, and it's the type of event that's a labor-type, very labor-intensive type event. A classic example is we have a very large individual that's in their upstairs room, and we have to bring him down a flight of stairs. That's a very difficult challenge for just two people. So we provide that labor-type backbone assistance, as well as the first response, that complements the EMS model that we currently have here in the city of Reno and Washoe County. We respond to a variety of hazardous materials events. The most significant event that we had this past year was out in Fernley, their water treatment facility, they had a major breach. It filled their facility with acid. We initially responded, and we mitigated it, or we controlled the leak, but the event was so large that it exceeded their capacity at their level to handle and mitigate, so we were actually on scene for almost a week. Fortunately, the city of Fernley did reimburse all of the costs that the city of Reno incurred. And when you talk about the hazardous materials team, it's not just the city of Reno. We have what's called the Triad Hazmat Team. Washoe County contributes a portion, Sparks, City of Sparks contributes a portion, and then the city of Reno contribute a portion annually to a standalone budget that's specifically dedicated to hazardous materials response, equipment, training, and part of personnel. So we provide the manpower, the Triad contributions pay for the training and the equipment, and it's a very effective program and one that we hope continues on. With respect to special operations, of course, we do fire rescue. We have a very robust water entry team. We, in the first month of last summer, it was a warm summer, we had some significant runoffs in the river. In one month's time, we executed over a dozen actual water rescues, and that was more than we did the previous year combined for the summer. So as you probably read in the paper, and yesterday, our water teams are already out there training for the spring, you know, warmer temperatures. High angle, these are our special operations team, high angle, whether it's the side of a mountain or the side of a building, we have the capability to actually extricate an individual that may become either trapped, injured. A real common example, you know, you see the window washer folks out there, and they'll have a malfunction with some of their equipment, and they'll be dangling off of a scaffolding, you know, 25 stories up. We have the capability of actually going up and bringing those folks down. In fact, sometimes they practice over at Conroe. Confined space is the exact opposite. That's where you have a trench. We had an incident on the 395 extension, just past West Washoe Valley, where an individual fell down a manhole cover that was left open. He fell approximately 20 feet, he shattered his hip, broke his leg. We had to physically go into the pit and extricate him. We had to package him and make sure that he was stable, and then we slowly brought him up, took us about three hours. So that's an example of our confined space capabilities. We do have some specialty rescue capabilities. Oftentimes, you hear us use the term, we use the jaws of life. We have special equipment that allows our teams to extricate people out of cars, heavy machinery, you know, farm equipment, I mean, you name it. If a person can get in trouble and, you know, get compromised, we respond to those type of events. The last portion of our department is the Fire Prevention Bureau, and they're in charge of prevention, code enforcement, inspections, to include safety education and juvenile What our focus is with the Prevention Bureau is to make sure that as we move forward with development, it's in alignment with our existing codes, and the inspection portion makes sure that we divide up our community into three major categories, high-risk occupancies, nursing homes, hospitals, schools, theaters, concert venues, things like that, medium risk and low risk. And we're basically on a three-year rotation. We take those high-risk occupancies, and we make sure that we hit those, or we inspect those occupancies every year. Medium risk, every two years, low risk, sometimes it's like a convenience store, we make sure that they're on at least a three-year rotation. 2011 calls for service, we responded to just over 37,000 calls. 245 of those were structure fires. Almost 30,000 were EMS calls, and we had 300 wildfires and approximately 343 hazardous materials calls. Now, not all of those hazardous materials calls were in the city of Reno proper. As I mentioned, we're part of a Triad team, so often we go outside of our jurisdiction to help our neighbors with respect to hazardous materials incidents. Of the EMS calls that we responded to, over 2,000 of those were motor vehicle accidents. The second common question I get is, "Why is it that the ladder company responded to a motor vehicle accident? It was a minor fender bender, and there's this large fire truck there, and, you know, why did it go? REMZA was there, and we saw all these people kind of standing around, and they were backslapping each other and shaking hands, and there really wasn't a lot going on." Well, a lot of that is explained, basically, when you call 911, I don't know if anybody's ever called 911 for any type of an emergency, but the 911 system receives multiple calls for the same event. And the dispatcher or the call taker will receive a call, and it'll come in something to the effect of, "I'm on 395, and I just passed two cars that have collided, and I saw one car had four persons in it, and they're kind of off to the side of the road, and there's stuff leaking, and I don't think they can get out of the car." And that's a real typical call to 911. And then, you know, of course, that initiates the call to REMZA, as well as the fire department, because leaking fluids could be anything from gasoline to antifreeze. People in the car could be potential for trapped victims. Now, our fire apparatus carries the tools that we need to extricate those people, but we get very limited snippets of information, and as that call taker gets more information and gets more information, we can either scale down the response, because oftentimes, we'll dispatch the cavalry, if you will, and as she gets more information, another caller will say, "Oh, yeah, they're getting out of the car, everybody looks okay." Then they'll actually cancel the fire side of that response. But more often than not, we respond because we... But more often than not, we respond because we prefer to err on the side of safety. And then typically, you know, we arrive, we size up the situation. If we're needed, we stay; if we're not, we leave. And then again, you know, there was an incident just last week where two cars were involved, I think it was on Longley Lane. One car had four individuals, the other car had two. It was a significant accident. You know, we had a total of six patients. So even for a single REMZA response, that would have overwhelmed their capabilities to manage those six incidents, or those six patients. So we support that system by, you know, dispatching an engine company. We're all medically trained, and we help, and we complement the EMS model here in the valley with respect to our responses. Our budget, I have $1,999 there because that was our budget prior to consolidation, and we're going to compare that to where we're going post-deconsolidation come July 1. In 1,999, we had a $23 million budget. In 910, I'm going back three years, we peaked at 49. 1011, we saw a reduction in force and a reduction in our budget to 45. 1112, we saw further reduction in force, as well as a reduction in our budget to $39 million. Overall, we've taken a 31% reduction of our budget, and what that has caused us to do is, not only have we laid off approximately 50, just over 50 firefighters, but we've had to brown out approximately three, sometimes four, stations. And what a brown out is, is a temporary closure of a fire station. There are times, today's a very good example, where our staffing is such that I'm able to open up more stations. Station 4 by the university, Station 8 further up, the road is open, Station 10 will likely open later on this evening, Station 21 by the GSR is open. The only one that I didn't open is Somerset and Skyline, but there are times when I do open up Skyline, especially if we perceive a threat and risk from a wildfire incident. We'll get a dry storm coming in, the fuel loads are high, the lightning probability index is off the charts. We won't hesitate to call back crews and staff our browned-out stations. So what does that budget impact mean to our full-time equivalents or our employees? Prior to consolidation, we had 255 full-time equivalents or employees. After deconsolidation, in 910, we peaked at 386. We went through a reduction in force, and we reduced that down. Some of those were through attrition, and some of those were through layoffs. We, in 1011, we were at 264. We went through a second round, and then in 2011 and 2012, we are currently at 266, and that was because we applied for and received a SAFER grant, a federal grant that allowed us to hire back 10 firefighters. So currently, we operate 13 stations, and technically, we have one hybrid station in the south. That's a county station, it's in the Walmart, Station 14. We staff that station, but the physical station, the physical property is that of the county. We have plans in place to stand up a south station as we move forward with plans to build a station, a more permanent facility in the south. The Truckee Meadows system is currently, consists of five stations, four in the north valleys and one down in West Washoe Valley, off of East Lake Boulevard. So what we are looking at is, we are looking at a budget of $30 million, and what that is going to afford us is 186 full-time equivalents. And what that means is that we will be able to operate 10, possibly 12, stations, depending on staffing. And staffing is impacted by sick leave, injury rates, military leave, maternity leave, and military leave. Right now, our rates are well within standard parameters for an organization of this size, but we would basically mirror what we look like right now. We would likely have three, possibly four, stations browned out, and I would have the ability to upstaff depending on threat and risk, and that's how I built my budget. So the most common question I get from this component is, "Why are we laying off 80 people?" Well, we hope to maintain, retain as many as we can, we hope to retain as many as our budget allows, but what is currently going on is the county, and it's well within their right to stand up their own department. They're in the process of standing up the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, and they are merging with the Sierra Fire Protection District. Their plan calls for hiring of employees. We currently carry 65 employees on our books to supplement or to keep the Truckee Meadows stations open. Those employees have the option of applying for and transferring into the Truckee Meadows-Sierra system if they so choose. Some of our employees have elected to do that, some of them have not. Where we're hitting a snag is that because the deconsolidation ends, or the consolidation ends June 30, and technically, they begin their system July 1, that also coincides with our budget process. Because I don't know how many people are going to transfer, and frankly, and it's no fault of the county, but they don't know how many they're going to hire or need, et cetera, we're kind of caught in this gray no-man's land. So I am forced to build my budget based on the fact that if no one left, if no one left the Reno system, I would have to reduce my force by 80 people. Now, what we have done is, we currently have a SAFER grant, which allows for 10 positions to be funded, and we have applied for an additional grant for the upcoming next two years. We are still waiting for official word on that grant, and that has the potential to impact anywhere from 20 to 25 more positions. So again, depending on how many positions slide over into the TM system, we could look at a very limited number of a reduction in force, if any at all. So again, it's a very, very flux-type situation, you know, it changes from day to day, and we monitor where our grant application process is daily. In fact, we had a conference call this morning to check on the status of that grant. So what does the future hold for us? Well, pursuant to the county, I'm sorry, pursuant to the city council's goals and direction that they provided at the strategic planning session, it was clear that seniors need to be a focus for us. And what we do very well is that we outreach to our school-aged children, and we do a lot of fire safety education in the schools. We are going to expand that. In fact, we are going to apply for a grant that will allow us to specifically target seniors with respect to fire safe behaviors. And that grant will be broad enough to where we can dovetail in elementary school-aged children with respect to, you know, stop, drop, and roll, exits, call Operation Edith, exit drills in the schools. There's a whole host of programs that we hope to fund, but we can currently implement on a very limited scale. If we're successful with this grant, we will be able to really roll it out on a large scale, we'll have the funding for it, the personnel, and believe it or not, the biggest thing that the kids remember is when you give them little stickers and things like that, and that's where our largest cost is. So we're going to aggressively pursue grants with respect to equipment, staffing, as I mentioned, and there are grant opportunities for stations, specifically station rehabilitation grants, not necessarily new stations, although they are out there. There are some federal funds available that if you've got an aging fire station that qualifies and meets the parameters, we can apply for federal funds that can help us rehab those stations. Now, the flip side to asking for federal funds is, very few grants are free. Most of them require some form of a match, and it's either a hard cash dollar match, or it's what we call an in-kind match. And an in-kind match is staff time has a certain value, administration of the grant has a certain value, so they take that in-kind value and apply it to meet the intent or the match of the grant. So a lot of people say we should go after federal money because it's free. Well, it's not necessarily free, and sometimes we don't want to let the tail wag the dog. We don't want to go after a grant specifically just because a grant is there, and all of a sudden, we're having to teach widget education to, you know, first graders. So we're very careful and very cognizant of what's out there, what's available, and does it meet the criteria that our council has directed us to follow. We want to continue with our special teams capabilities, hazmat, technical rescue, and water rescue. We currently are moving towards a very high-profile, customer-based service organization. And I know that sounds kind of fluffy and pretty, but really, what that means is, when our people show up, we want to make sure that we meet our customers' needs. And a very good example is, right after the Collin fire, it took us almost a week to fully extinguish that fire. We were out on the scene for a fire, but what a lot of people don't know, and a lot of people don't recognize is that for the following month, for almost 30 days, we had our crews literally going street to street, block to block, neighborhood to neighborhood, checking on individuals that had their homes impacted in some way, shape, or form to ensure that there wasn't some type of unmet need. We had individuals that their homes completely collapsed, and they had mementos and things that they wanted to, they wanted us to help retrieve certain things that were in their basement that they couldn't get to, and we were able to get to, so we continued that outreach. So that's what I mean when I say we're going to continue with our high-profile, customer-service-based organization. We call them Mrs. Smith. We're looking at enhancing our EMS capabilities. As we move forward, we do have some paramedics that are within our system, and we want to make sure that our paramedics are equally trained to match the level of the paramedics that currently work for REMZA, and we want to make sure little things like the equipment that we use is compatible with the equipment that they use, so that if we put a CPR, I'm sorry, a monitor, a heart monitor on you, we don't have to disconnect it so that they can put theirs on you. We want to be able to plug and play, we want to be able to unplug it from ours and plug it into theirs, and off they go. So we're very cognizant of what our capabilities are, and we want to make sure that everything we do with respect to EMS is complementary to the REMZA model. And lastly, we want to outreach to the business community and special populations. Most recently, we met with the senior, the Washoe County Senior Advisory Group, and we basically asked that group, "What is it that the Fire Department can do specific to the seniors? Fire safety education, assistance with smoke detector, even simple things like changing a battery in a smoke detector is a challenge for a person of advanced age." So we want to make sure that we identify those needs in our special populations, and we want to make sure that if there's something we can do to accommodate that, we're doing it. Special populations, we have a broad base of diversity in our community, to include the physically and hearing impaired, mentally impaired, we want to make sure that if there's something that the department can do, at the very least, we need to outreach to these groups and leaders in those groups, and to make sure that if there's a need that we can address, we're at least, it's at least on our radar. We may not be able to do something now, but it's on our radar. Questions? Yes, sir.
Chief Hernandez, what can the city council do policy-wise or money-wise to help your department in actually going after all these grants?
Well, through the city manager's office, we advise him, we advise the city manager's office and his staff of available grants and whether or not they're applicable. It's our job to make sure that we know what's out there, and we do. Maureen McKissick, she's the young lady back there in the red, she's our governmental liaison person. She also works closely with those grant funds that are out there, but actually, at this time, we do, short of having somebody that looks for private sector grant funding opportunities, we cover most of those bases relatively well, and should you be elected, you could always tell the city manager he can increase my budget, so. Just a subliminal hint there. Yes, ma'am.
Chief Hernandez, you had spoken of the hazmat team in the Washoe County of the Triad, and is that in jeopardy with deconsolidation, or is that a separate program?
Well, the Triad is a separate program. Unfortunately, we haven't gotten to that level of discussions yet because the county's moving relatively quickly and standing up their department, and I think, again, I can't speak for the TM system, but I think that their focus is, let's get our stations open, let's get them staffed, and then we can worry about some of these other things. And the city of Reno is not going to turn the back on the county. I mean, if we have a rescue situation out in the county, we're not going to say, you know, we're not going to thumb our nose at them and say, "Hey, too bad." You know, we're going to do everything we can within our powers to assist our neighbors. There's been a lot of stuff in the media that, you know, it's been a bitter, ugly divorce, and, you know, and we're now on eharmony.com, and we're taking dates and that kind of thing, but the truth of the matter is, you know, I'm committed, our department is committed to ensuring that our community is protected. You know, the issue of automatic aid, mutual aid, which are two different concepts, has been a bit contentious, and rightly so. The city manager, through the direction of the council, has directed me to make sure that when we enter into or even discuss automatic aid, that it's equitable, and that there isn't an undue burden placed on the taxpayers and the citizens of Reno in providing primary service to geographic areas that are the responsibility of the county. It's kind of grown into this huge nuclear debate, but the bottom line is, you know, is as a city council person, would you authorize me to spend city of Reno taxpayer money to provide primary service to an area that is already taxed and money going to a separate governmental entity? And we've tried to have some reasonable discussions with respect to that issue, and we've made some movement, you know, we've agreed on the concept of mutual aid, and that was never really an issue. You know, if they, if any entity, whether it's Carson, Sparks, Truckee Meadows, Sierra, North Lake Tahoe, if they pick up the phone, they call me and say, "Chief, we need some help, can you send us an engine?" We're going to send an engine. And likewise, we've done the same, so.
Can you ask about Tom Motherway and Mrs. Smith, the Hayek Group?
The Hayek, the Hayek Group, yes. Which report?
The one that I got, that was sort of outlining the angle of the study.
Correct. I'm not familiar with Tom's, yeah, I'm not familiar with Tom's report. He's a pretty prolific writer, and he's, I know Tom.
He was mostly on the 911 situation, and other reality services. He was just getting along with all sorts of candidates.
Yeah.
I'm sure he might have called about it.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure which report you're talking to, but the Hayek Group has been very concerned about, and for those of you that don't, does everybody know who Tom Motherway and the Hayek Group is? They're kind of a conservative think tank, a lot of philosophical, deep-thinking type folks, and they look at emergency services, not just fire, but all emergency services to include EMS delivery globally with respect to how that is being delivered in the county, and they kind of promote different alternatives that are economical, cost-effective, timely, and those type of things. And we, you know, I know Tom personally, and we talk, and, you know, sometimes we have philosophical differences of opinion, but, you know, I respect his, and, yeah, well, you know, but he's also my constituent, so I listen to his concerns and try and provide as much information as I can. But as the Fire Chief, I look at, and, you know, Chief Evans will also echo that Chief Pitts's concerns, first and foremost, are the protection of our citizens, because that's our job. I mean, that's number one. That's why when you walk into a fire station, you ask them, "Who's Mrs. Smith?", they're going to turn around and point right at you. And that is our mantra. We do everything we can for Mrs. Smith because she's our customer, so. Last chance before I go. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, it's my turn. So I'd appreciate a little enthusiasm, since I haven't been impressing my boss, obviously, very much, so it's going to be a little high-energy presentation. We'll wake you up here. It's my pleasure to present to you on behalf of Chief Pitts. What we've done is kind of prepared, there's a lot of information here, we'll go through it as quickly as we can, we'll certainly try to stay within our timeframe, but we wanted to kind of give you at first a snapshot of the last three years. And through this whole presentation, this is a snapshot of the last three years of what we've been doing, and we really wanted you to get an idea of what your police department's been doing, not really hunkering down and trying to weather a storm that may not end. We've actually implemented a lot of strategies. So kind of what we've been dealing with, these are the challenges, reduction in our budget by 12 million over the last three years, that number there is what it currently sits at, reduction in grant funding by 60%, and I will tell you that we aggressively pursue grants. We have about 25 grants that we currently work, probably 16 of them are really continually funded now, and the other ones are kind of dying off. So that is obviously nothing new to the police department, it's happening everywhere. Our sworn numbers are down, we've lost 100 sworn police officers during those three years, and obviously, the 284 is where we currently stand. Civilian numbers, 58, so we're down 50 there, so almost half of our civilian folks have been reduced. Our executive staff, we reduced by 70% to try to keep those jobs on the street and keep police officers on the street. Closure of two substations, the north and central, which has obviously presented some challenges when it comes to customer service, and we'll talk a little bit about that in a later slide. Calls for service have stayed consistent, about 150,000 a year is what we respond to, so those aren't really helping us out, they're not going down, although we'll show you some positive crime stats as we kind of go through there, and then our square miles that we still patrol. And the thing that I want to kind of highlight here, let's see here. Okay. No. I'm obviously not, didn't come here in practice. So the strategies that we implemented, and just so you know, we got together as an executive staff, and we talked about the overall desire to create a culture of people who, where we can build the capacity for them to adapt in a rapidly changing environment that we've been going through for three years. So some of the ideas that we decided to kind of implement three years ago to create that culture- culture are up here on the screen. So the first thing we did is we created the guiding principle work groups. And those are the things that we said we were going to be the very best at. And I don't think, looking at them, you could argue that we shouldn't be, as your police department, the very best at these areas. So we have intelligence-led policing, this is all of our data, our crime analysis that we're actually pushing out to our officers every day so that they have the best information. Community policing and problem solving, we created a CAO team, which we'll get to you in a minute. We took it from two to 10 people through grant funding right at the height of where we were making the cuts because we wanted to really focus on crime fighting and problem solving out in the community. And these folks do that every day, they work with the high-risk locations and they come up with long-term strategies. We created the customer service and personal safety committee. Again, really hard to argue that we shouldn't be good at that. Innovation in technology, we know that we're going to have challenges with technology, our criminals are always advancing and so we've got to look for ways to continue to be progressive there. Leadership, which I think is one of the most important things that we did in those three years is we recognized the need to talk about leadership and organizational family enrichment. We actually, and as we get through there, you'll see what we've done with leadership, which I think is something we're benefiting from today. So the first thing we really had to do is we had to reorganize the police department. And when you do something like that, it's like the Apollo 13, throw it all out on the table, try to figure out what you're going to do. But we knew that we weren't, we were still going to have to provide the best service and it wasn't an option to just say we're not going to give you something. You'll never hear that from the Reno Police Department, you won't hear it in the media, you haven't heard it for three years. So what we decided to do is say, okay, our patrol staffing has got to stay strong. We rotated, as we lost positions, we moved those positions back into patrol. Where we really sustained most of the casualties is on our support side of it. So you have detective, detective division, you know, the follow-up side of it really took the most significant hit. But when you pick up the phone and dial 911, you know, the assumption is you're going to get somebody there as quick as possible. So a lot of people didn't see a reduction in police cars on the street, that's why. It wasn't that we weren't losing police officers, that was where our priority was. We also recognized the need to really develop our command staff and really kind of tap into the private sector because when we talked about adapting quickly and rapidly changing environment, nobody does it better than the private sector. And so what we did is we established a chief's advisory board. We handpicked a variety of people in the community that we thought had a particular skill set that could help us develop, we could bounce questions off of it. Wasn't a political board where we just had lunch once in a while, this is an actual working board where we talk about real problems and we get great ideas and it's really been incredible over the last three years. And they're very dedicated to the Reno Police Department and the city of Reno. Keep doing that. Chris, you're going to have to help me get this straight, I think. So, anyway, we'll just keep going. We created the community action officer team. Perfect, you're the technology guy, aren't you? That's right. Okay, so we created the community action officer team, like I said, this is the CAO team, we took it from two to 10. We have these people out working in every area of the city, they're assigned geographical locations in the city. And really what they do is they look for long-term problem solving. They're not the quick fix teams, we have those, which we'll talk about in a second. But this is a team that kind of goes out, looks at more of the systemic issues. We use them downtown for the panhandling issues, homeless issues, those kind of things where they can really look at what's kind of feeding the ultimate beast here and we come up with a solution for it and they work with all of the stakeholders. And again, from two to 10 and we've had some great results there. And then obviously, we decided to put in a branding strategy which focused on the way we're adding value to the community. And those are through the other teams that we created at that time, the crime suppression team. All as they do is they come in every day and support patrol on any active criminal serial deal that's going on, they get that information, they go out that day and they make arrests and they work with patrol to do that. Of course, CAO. Code Baby is actually a concept that we took from Colorado Springs, recognizing the need to communicate better since we closed a couple substations with our folks in the community. It actually walks people through the report writing system, it's an avatar, dressed in a uniform, actually talks you through a police report, explains those processes because we felt like we were losing some of that. So we implemented that. And then our crime fighting strategies in general are a daily discussion. Those are things, again, we've got an incredible group of crime fighters in the last two or three years just simply because we've made it a priority for them to go out and concentrate on what's important to the community. And then we started, like I mentioned, leadership is very important, obviously with times that we've gone through, the hits that we've taken. And we started the leadership challenge. At that time, we were taking all those cuts, we sent people to get trained and we brought them back and we developed courses for every level of the organization so that we could push leadership through and actually expect leadership at every level of the organization. It was the only way we were going to kind of get this concept of being able to move quickly and adapt if we give our folks the ability to make decisions without having to run it up the chain. This has been, I think, one of the most significant things we've done because we see it at every level now and it's really made a difference in our culture. Robert? Perfect, I like this now. Okay, so obviously, the other thing we did is we talk about budget all the time, we made it everybody's business. We push out information on a weekly basis to our divisions, our lieutenants that run those divisions are getting information on every dollar that they're spending, overtime and they're managing it. And we have staff meetings weekly where we hold them accountable for that. So we're talking about money all the time. They're very fiscally responsible. We took it upon ourselves to schedule monthly meetings with our budget department, Kate over there, so that we could sit down and make sure that we are being proactive, that there's not going to be something we're missing and that we're not going to be hit all of a sudden with a big shortfall where we're going to have to make some serious decisions. So by doing that, it allows us to be a little bit more interactive with each other and we stay responsive to whatever we see coming. So that's been a great conversation, that occurs every month. And then we created the Reno Police Department Foundation. It's managed by the community foundation, which most of you are probably aware, they have, you know, probably 100 foundations, maybe more, I don't know. And this was, again, recognizing the need that at some point, we're going to have, we're not going to be able to have those revenue streams to buy and purchase the things that we're absolutely going to need to keep progressive. So we started this foundation for the simple fact is we wanted to be able to tap into some other resource if we needed equipment, training. We already have about six kind of areas that people like to give to and we had separate funds for that, we just kind of wrapped it all in and then we created a separate area that would support training, education, equipment, stuff like that. So we're excited about that, we just got that going and it's just another way that we're looking to kind of capitalize on everything we can and the support we get in the community. So the implementation strategy continued here. So we have a three-year strategic plan, we just worked through this. And what we did is we took some courses, we brought some information back from Cornell on scenario planning and we said, we kind of did a cross-section of our organization and we said, okay, not only are we going to do a strategic plan, we thought three years is about as far out as we could possibly go with a strategic plan, but that what we're going to do is really challenge them to be more diagnostic, make them actually have to go through scenarios. And we put them through about 26 different scenarios that would play out the worst-case scenarios, in some cases, better scenarios, so that we already have strategies in place. We weren't doing that Apollo 13 in the final hour trying to figure out what we were doing, we already kind of knew what we would do if those hit. Those include continual reductions in our budget, they include increases in our budget. I mean, the things that we want to keep paying attention to. Now where those things will sit are in the guiding principle work groups that I talked about earlier. Some of that work will be monitored and constantly maintained by those groups. Others, especially the financial ones, will be monitored by the executive staff and those are things that we talk about weekly. And so we're really proud of that. We learned a lot through that process and I think we got a really strong three-year strategic plan because of it. And then obviously, developing strong relationships with the labor groups. As we were going through this, we were talking with our labor presidents weekly. This is a huge leadership challenge as we went through a reduction in force, trying to negotiate a collective bargaining agreement. And this requires constant discussion and interaction with these groups. They trust us, they understood that it was a huge leadership decision to have to go in and make these cuts. The alternative was they weren't going to grow their organizations anymore. And we told them, take the sacrifice and we'll grow. And we are growing again. So that's the positive thing. And so that was the other really main relationship that we had to constantly work with as we went through this process, but it's made us all stronger, I think, because of it. So because of all those strategies, these are kind of the outcomes that have occurred. So we created a culture which is more diagnostic, better understands leadership practices and behaviors and which is supported at every level. We've got decision-makers at every level and we see it every day. We worked through and settled the collective bargaining agreements. We've got a better crime fighting group out there, I have to tell you, because that was the culture, crime fighting, problem solving. And we decided, you know what, every day, everybody's going through issues at home, at work, and if they come to work and they stay focused on progress, something that they're excited about, then we're going to have a better, happier workforce and you've got the best police officers out there right now that we can give you because that's all they do is make arrests and I'm going to show you that in a minute. And so they have the best information, they share stuff and we do this regionally, it's not just within the city of Reno. So the reduction of UCR crime rate, which are major crimes, has been 22, almost 23% in that same period. So we're down 100 police officers, down 50 civilian support staff folks and yet crime is, now this isn't, this isn't, I'm not going to sit up here and pound my chest and say this is all Reno PD. This is a trend around the country right now. Most people are under the assumption, the perception in the community is that crime rate must go up because we have all these problems. But actually, we're seeing a decline in it. I like to think because we're working smarter and we're, obviously, we've made that our focus, but I think that's something that we should be proud of. Obviously, we've achieved fiscal responsibility at every level, we will be balanced, our budget will be balanced, we work on it every week to make sure it's balanced, we control our overtime and our spending. We've got great community support right now and I think it's because we keep them informed. You haven't heard us tell them that we're not going to do something, we just figure out a way to do it. And obviously, our survey results came back with an 82% approval rating, which is very good now. It's never good enough for us, but that is very good, it's actually an upward trend even though we've been going through some challenging times. So we're very proud of that. And then we've got a command staff which has developed over the past three years to be more adaptive and diagnostic as well, which is going to make us all those experienced pilots that we all want to see at the cockpit at some point because we've been through it. And there's really not much you can throw at us other than losing an employee and in some sort of tragic incident, that would be harder than what we've been through in the last three years and we've come out of it even stronger, so. So moving forward, obviously, the execution of the strategic plan is going to be important. That will be with the guiding principle work groups, as I said earlier. Obviously, we want to grow the organization and we're doing that. And it's because of the hard work of the unions and the administration to make this work and obviously with the support of the city that we are moving forward and slowly growing again. We lost 60 people in four months just through retirements and that's a lot of organizational knowledge, so we need to grow again and we are doing that now. Focusing on public perception of crime issues and safety in the downtown Reno area, that's one of the hot topics right now. So you're going to see, you're going to see, especially over the summer, surge operations. We're working on a city center project to, a substation for our downtown enforcement team and to work those surge operations out of. And eventually, we see that as being a full-service substation again for our community to come in and take advantage of. And obviously, working with the hotel owners and stakeholders in the downtown area to come up and deal with some of these bigger problems, the panhandling stuff, we're putting signage down there and coordinating the casinos and the properties with their video surveillance to kind of make it a more powerful tool for us to use. And then obviously, we've also helped them establish a communication link between all the properties so they have a better opportunity to talk about the things they're seeing and what's going on on a daily basis and we just kind of, we're still working through those issues. So we're bringing in a department-wide diversity training, a very substantial one that we're bringing in. It will be, you know, they've come in and done interviews, it's not just your run-of-the-mill course, we're overdue for it and we're proud that we're able to bring that in. We're looking to improve technology as it relates to crime fighting, evidence management, community networking, customer service. We took a little bit, you know, we recognize we're going to take a little bit of hit on the customer service follow-up side because of the casualties that we took in the detective and support divisions. That's just, that's what we have to do. So we're looking at ways that technology can help us close that gap a little bit. I just came back yesterday from a group that has a lot of great ideas to help us with that. And so we are looking at ways that technology can help us kind of close that gap. Obviously, the leadership challenge is going to continue to go and we're pushing leadership at every level, that's not going to stop, we still have a lot of people to get through that training. We're building stronger networks in the community right now, we recognize those partnerships are going to become even more important if we're going to be effective. And then we're looking at things like developing an ambassador program with youth that we're partnering with the parks, kind of look at doing, again, to educate and brand the city and the various departments within the city to the community during events and stuff like that so that we can continue to promote a nice, safe city. Continue to support and grow both the crime fighting and problem solving strategies, CST, like we mentioned, the crime suppression team, CAO and patrol initiatives and technology. Those are things that we have to stay focused on, we have a guiding principle work group just to stay focused on those things. Improve customer service through better educational programs. We recognize that although we put out a lot of information to the media, they still, you know, they're only picking up on the bad stuff. So we've actually just kind of worked through a branding strategy with the organization. So we're looking at those programs that are adding value in the community and that are, we're going to look to highlight those achievements either through our personnel or programs that we're doing. You're going to see more of that, we've got a Facebook page, through YouTube, we've got a lot of those avenues that we're going to be kind of working on. But we recognize that we've got to get this, more of this stuff out because I guarantee that most of you probably didn't know we were doing all this in the last three years. But the reality is, is we've got a great organization, they're highly adaptive now, more so than they were three years ago. And as far as crime fighting goes, I put them up against any agency in the country and I think they're happy to come to work every day. And so I'm happy to stand up here because I think that we've got a great organization. That's it. So we're doing, questions at the end, right? Okay.
Okay, so Robert and I kind of take a little bit of a different approach at first, we're going to tell you a little bit about ourselves because we're relatively new here to the city or back, depending on how you look at it. But I'm Kate Thomas, I'm the budget director and I was with the city a number of years ago, serving as the assistant to the city manager. And then I left and went to the state where I worked for Secretary of State Ross Miller for five years as his deputy secretary of state for operations. So I had experience there overseeing budget and finance and accounting and HR and IT. And I've been back about five months now, so any really technical questions, I'm going to completely bail on you and get back to you. But that gives you a little bit of an idea of where we're coming from because Robert too comes from the state.
Yeah. Does this work? Yeah, okay. I just recently came from the Nevada Department of Transportation where I was assistant director of administration. And as I like to say, anything non-engineering was swept down the hall to my area. I've been a 30-year resident of the city of Reno, actually been coming to this area with my family since the 60s. A UNR grad, got my CPA in the early 90s and, you know, I'd like to say I'm really excited about the group we have here at the city. This is a very professional group that we have and you're looking at some really great people, the police, the fire, the staff. And if you get to be council members, you'll be pleased to have such a great staff working under you. So without further ado, you want to get started?
Sure. This is a, and I'll let you run the, thanks. First of all, we just start with the city purpose to kind of ground you and give you a direction for where we base all of our decisions financially off of the operations of the city and what we really need to be functioning as is a municipality. So on the next slide, we're going to show you what we lovingly call this presentation, the doom and gloom presentation. We really are not trying to scare you off, it is just a very realistic picture of where we are as a city and where we have been in the last couple of years. We are very heavily focused right now on financial sustainability, you saw in the council priorities that Chris Good had put up there, that's the top priority of the council at this time. And it's a little different than we were a couple of years ago, where we were project-based and we were able to do kind of a lot more because we have those resources. But right now, it's an all-hands effort over and around financial and fiscal stability and sustainability. So some of the challenges that you see up here, we'll delve into a little bit more and they include reserve levels, you know, we all know where revenues are going, costs, you'll see kind of an example of if we do nothing, where our costs will be headed. Robert will go into the captivating presentation on our debt. We'll talk a little bit about unfunded liabilities, which is a significant issue for us and one that has come to bear recently in years where we have a new financial accounting requirement that has kind of shed some light on a pretty significant unfunded liability that we have that we'll talk about a little bit more. I mentioned sustaining core service levels, where we want to be as a city really is one of those things that we're taking a hard and fast look at so that we can figure out in these lean economic in these lean economic times, where do we want to shift some levels of service to the community? Do we really need to do everything that we're doing? Do we need to do more? We're just taking a hard look at, you know, what we should be at a foundational or core service level. Unanticipated expenditures are things that we consider natural disasters, another disaster we like to lovingly deem special projects. Those types of things kind of come into play outside of the budget cycle, so they don't give us much time to prepare, so we call them unanticipated. Fire deconsolidation, I'm really not going to touch with a 10-foot pole. Regional economy and image, though, we want to kind of let everybody know that it's important that we, as a, as a city, project ourselves to be fiscally and financially solid, because it matters to other jurisdictions or other regions, what Reno looks like in order to attract new development and new business here. So, you know, it kind of all hits down to that baseline of where we want to be and what we are as a city. So, we'll delve into the reserves with a look at two different types. Ending fund balance and contingency are the two reserve levels that you'll be hearing about the most, and when, when we talk about what we've got for safety nets and savings accounts per se at the city. The next couple of slides will show you where we are with those, I'll give you a graphical depiction of what those look like. But we continue to take a hard, fast look at all of the revenues that are coming in, the expenditures that are going out, areas that we can improve, and the, the message and the mantra for this year, and then it will probably bleed over into the better part of next year, is basically, we're asking all the departments, and they've done a tremendous job, of holding the line, so that we can balance our continuing adjustments, if you will, in revenues, although they are looking a little bit better. Ad valorem or property tax is still on the downward side. So, hold the line is really what, what the departments have done a great job as, at, and they are using a lot of mechanisms that I'll touch on a little bit later, about how they are maintaining that line. So, I mentioned the two types of contingencies and reserves. General fund balance is the first one that I'm showing you here, and basically, what you're seeing is the blue line, which is our ending fund balance, and that is shown on the right-hand side as a percentage of, you can see the percentages on the right-hand side of your, of your screen there. The, the blue dotted line shows you where we were with ending fund balance as a percentage of the general fund revenues, or the general fund expenditures for that fiscal year. So, you can kind of see that it started that downward trend, and then, in 2011, this last fiscal year, we actually dipped below that horizontal 4% line, which is what we are required by Nevada Administrative Code to budget at the beginning of our budget every, every fiscal year. So, we can go below that, it's not a great thing to dip that heavily into your savings, obviously, but we are allowed to do that, as long as the next fiscal year, we start budgeting that level back up to 4% when we're going through our planning process. The other type is contingency, and that is a specific line item in our general fund budget. It's, I like to call it our savings account, per se. Number of years ago, the council made the wise decision to set aside some additional funds, so that we have them for a rainy day, and as you can see, in 2010 and 11, it rained. And in basically, 2012, I'm showing you right here, that we've got a little more than $2 million in that contingency account, but I have adequately warned council folks that barring no significant reductions in expenditures, or rather, in revenues or increases in expenditures, we, we would have that, we're not going to have that, just this fiscal year. We're not going to go completely dry, but we're going to have to rely on that funding source and that rainy day fund, once again, this fiscal year. In the long term, though, we are putting together solid fund policies, so that we, as your financial folks at the city, can build into place a, a solid reserve level that's adequate enough to weather us through another one of these economic downturns, without significant impacts, such as layoffs, such as degradation of service levels, deferred capital maintenance, things of that nature. So, we're very, very aware, you know, things have been good, and again, it was, it was good planning that had us being able to use this resource, but we are very, very aware that we need to focus hard on rebuilding these, these items that serve as safety nets for us.
Two of our major revenues are ad valorem tax and C-tax. Ad valorem, or is commonly referred to as property tax, and C-tax, consolidated tax is a conglomeration of a number of taxes, primarily, 80% of it is sales tax, then about 15% of it is your government services tax, which is on your vehicles. If you, when you register your car, you see that everyone wonders what that government services tax is on their car and where it goes to. Some of it comes here, comes to, some to the schools. There's also liquor tax for hip, hard liquor, cigarette tax, and real property transfer tax. Those all kind of are lumped together countywide, and then distributed down at the local levels. We get about 29% of it, on average, within the city of Reno, with what's distributed to the county. This is a bright subplot for us. C-tax has been going up month over month, actually, the last six months. The year-over-year increase has been, you see the little numbers there, and 11% in December was a really good month. That's a, that's a high month anyways, Christmas sales, and to have a big increase that month was really good, so, you know, that's the positive part of the revenue. That's about the most positive we have in our doom and gloom speech here. Ad valorem, though, is continuing to decrease. We're looking next year for about a 4.5% to 5% decrease in ad valorem, which in some ways is actually good. We had originally projected up to a 10% reduction, but it's actually looking at about 4.5%. Just to give you an idea of C-tax over the last several years, and where we're looking in the future, you can see, back in 2008, we had over $51 million of C-tax. This year, we're looking at about $40 million. So, that's, that's a huge decrease for the city in our revenues. We're looking at only a small increase in 2013 and 14. Some people will say, well, if you're seeing these increases, why aren't you seeing big increases into next year? Part of it goes into the Nevada v. statutes, and how they do the distribution of the C-tax. And whether we're going to go to a, a different calculation next year, it's probably very likely so. We're looking at a 1% increase in C-tax for next year, and then, small increases in 14 and 15. Ad valorem, the property tax, as you can see, we're looking at, we talked about the 4.5% decrease next year. One of the things that everyone looks at is the anomaly here, you see the bubble, actually, you know, property values started decreasing in 2007, 2008 timeframe, but you see, wow, your, your property taxes are still going up. Have to remember, years ago, the legislature passed a bill that capped how much your property taxes increased per year. It was 3% for personal, 8% for commercial, so there was what we call an abatement in your taxes, and it took a while for that abatement, you know, as your property values went up and then down, your property tax was still less than what the value was, but it, so it took a while. It just kind of moved the bubble out to 2010, and then it dropped off. We're hoping, maybe optimistically, 2014, there won't be any decreases, probably won't be any increases. Talking to a lot of the Builders Association and the commercial brokers, and it, we're hoping in 2015, there will be, start a recovery of the property values, and there may be an increase. However, again, because of what I talked about, that cap, even if property values shot up through the roof, we can only go up 3% a year for personal property and 8% for commercial, and even that's tied to CPI, so it, it's not a large increase. This is everything put together, just, you know, ad valorem, C-tax is probably about 60% to 70% of our revenue, there are other revenues, franchise fees, and the like. Most of those are fairly flat, and, but you can see, there's a big decrease in 2013. Again, that's the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District payment for fire services, and of course, the associated expenditures decrease also. But again, you see, our revenues are going to be flat for the next several years, not much change.
So, we've talked about reserves, and we've talked about revenues, and here, we're going to match up revenues and expenditures and see how they compare. And I'm going to make the editorial note, because some of you numbers folks might be poring through this later, that the revenues that you saw on the previous slide, I think it was 100, for 2011, was 168, I think, million. But these numbers are changing daily, but the, the important takeaway here is to look at how, from 2008, '09, '10, and '11 fiscal years, our revenues were definitely outpacing our expenditure, our, let me reverse that, our expenditures were definitely outpacing our revenues, which put us into the need to use those contingency and stabilization accounts. You can see what that was happening there. Since we've prepared this presentation a couple days ago and posted it, the 2011, 2012, the current fiscal year that we're in, is, we are, we are balanced. We're going to end the fiscal year, you know, without a, a shortfall in that regard. So, you know, no layoffs, no customer service, that kind of thing. And then, we go into the future years, 13, 14, and 15, which is the point of this slide, to show you that if we don't do anything around expenditures, and that's just kind of keeping things at status quo. 84% of our expenditures, which are personnel, what we see here is, we've applied a 3% cap, that's that little kind of pink or salmon-colored cap that you see on the top of the expenditure bar. That depicts the 3% that we're conservatively estimating would be not cost of living increases, but rather, costs for benefits and for existing contracts, labor contracts, things of that nature. So, you can see where we start to go right back into the, the trend where expenditures are outpacing revenues, and we're kind of right back where we started. And so, one of the things that we're taking a hard and fast look at is, what can we do in that regard to take a look at the, the bulk majority of our expenditures around people, and what we can do to kind of hone in on making sure that we don't get back into the, into the downward spiral of that. So, that's what we're depicting in this slide, and I apologize, the quo of status quo got cut off in our little box there in those, in those out years. Oh, I do, you know what, I did want to mention on that last slide. This was the, the trigger slide that we shown, showed during the Council Strategic Priority Session back in, end of February, where in 2012, we had, there was a little bit more significant gap at that time, because it was February, and the paper headline, I think many of you remember, it was a $7.5 million shortfall for the city of Reno. That's where that number came from, from the paper. It didn't take into account a lot of, of factors that we have, have obviously factored in since then, where we realistically were with supplies and services. Usually, we budget that we're going to spend all of those, but after taking a second look and readjusting and all that sort of thing, that's what you see today. That's why it's unfortunate that things get promoted the way that they are, but you're not seeing the $7.5 million gap here that will trigger any more headlines, thankfully.
Speaking of headlines, city bond debt. This is our bond debt outstanding for the last several years, and looking forward based on the bond payments. A couple of things to note, if you look at the slide, the blue at the bottom is what we call general obligation bonds. GO bonds are the full faith and credit of the city of Reno to make the payments of those bonds. From our general fund revenues, just whatever revenues are, we're going to make those bond payments. And as you can see, that's a small percentage, or it's good size, but it's not a huge amount of the bonds that we have outstanding. The green on the top is a Special Assessment District Bonds. Those are tied to your local improvements, sidewalk improvements, streetlights that may occur in your neighborhood or a park. Those bonds, again, are a small segment of the bonds outstanding. And in the middle, that purply color there is what we call the revenue bonds. Revenue bonds are where a certain stream of revenue is pledged to the bonds, and a good example is the retract bonds. There's a 1/8% sales tax countywide that is pledged to those revenue bonds. That is all that's pledged to them, nothing more, nothing less. You know, they're not going to come and take the trench away. What they will do is they will come and take that 1/8% sales tax, and that's all they, they get. And because they're revenue bonds, they're a slightly higher risk, and the bond buyers know this when they buy the bonds. It's in the official statements, I can, if you pull up the, any of our official statements, it talks about the risk involved in purchasing those bonds, and these banks and these Wall Street investment investors know what they're doing. They're very sophisticated, they have purchased the bonds with the risk, and because they're higher risk, we pay a slightly higher interest rate on a revenue bond than you would on a GO. GOs offer a lower interest rate. A good example is your home mortgage, usually is a lower interest rate than a credit card, because a credit card is unsecured. So, I'd like to point out that, you know, a lot of the bond debt that is talked about for the city of Reno is from pledged revenue, whether it's a retract 1/8% or it's room tax downtown, in downtown area or other places, it is not the general obligation of the city for these debts. These are our debt payments. You know, as you can see, we're running about $38, $40 million a year in debt payments for the, those bonds. There is going to be a jump in 2014. As you can see, part of that is, speaking of the retract bonds, again, there were actually two bonds issued as part of the outstanding bonds for retract currently. One of them has a forbearance or a, a payment holiday through June 2013, in which case, we will have to start making payments on those bonds again. So, there is a leap in 2014 for those bond payments, and that continues on. And speaking of obligations, this is what Kate had referred to earlier, when she was talking about changes in reporting. Back in 2007, actually, the pronouncement came in 2004, but it wasn't required until 2007 fiscal year, cities and counties, local governments started having to report other post-employment benefits. Other post-employment benefits up until then had never been reported on financial statements, so a lot of people never paid any attention to them. Now they're out there, and there's a lot of discussion, and the city of Reno is really no different than any other municipality or county across this country. There's a lot of articles, if you do a Google of OPEB, you, I'm sure we'll find many articles about OPEB. OPEB is other post-employment benefits, primarily for us, medical insurance. So that when I retire, the city of Reno will pay my medical insurance for a period of time up until age 65, or depending on my contract, you know, a lifetime benefit. Those costs have not been, nobody has been putting any money aside for those payment of those benefits. We are doing what is called pay-as-you-go, which is, again, what most municipalities have been doing, a pay-as-you-go. The actuarial amount of the pay-as-you-go is $250 million, as you see there. If we closed the city of Reno June 30th, 2011, we would have to have $250 million to make the payments for all the obligations that the city has incurred up till that point. Now, that sounds very bad and doom and gloom, but that's over 40, 50 years worth of, probably actually longer, because we're living longer, I'd like to live a little longer, of the life of our employees. And it's actuarial-based, so there, it can change based on the actuarial report and the life and the, what the benefits are, but it gives you an idea of some unfunded liabilities that the city has outstanding. And then, the other slice you see up there is the workers' compensation slice. The workers' compensation slice, you may have read in the paper this fall, discussions about the city having a negative cash balance in the workers' comp fund. Well, that had been corrected this year. However, we have not been reserving for workers' comp. That means primarily, a lot of this is a heart and lung, some of it is the IBNR incurred but not reported. And, you know, an example I use is sometimes if somebody gets injured, you may have a reoccurring injury in the future. We, we are making the current payments on those injuries and those medical costs, and, but we are not putting any aside for the future. Because if I get injured today, I may have to go back to the doctor next year to get reconstructive surgery. I know, it looks like I need reconstructive surgery, but, ah, come on. But, you know, I may need to go back to the doctor next year, so we have not reserved any of those monies, and that's about $36 million. You know, just kind of giving you a little split between the, the current split between the enterprise fund and the governmental funds. And then, since, you know, I'm on a roll here with you, one of the other things that we need to be looking at is our capital. We are not, have not been funding our capital maintenance program the way we should. And anyone that has, has a swimmer, or has gone to the Reno Police Department, or some of the other facilities, knows that some of our facilities are, are getting a little worn. And normally, you should be putting money aside to make those capital improvements, and/or doing those capital improvements kind of as a pay-as-you-go. In the last couple of years, due to the fiscal issues we've been having, we have not been doing much maintenance in the way of capital improvements, maintenance, and what we see here is about $40 million is what the depreciation is that has not been recaptured. We, if you... We, if, just to give you an idea, the forty million dollars, we were, we couldn't really come up with a number of our capital improvements that we needed to do. It's a rather large number. But on a go-forward basis, you should be putting aside about what your depreciation is for capital improvements and capital maintenance. And our depreciation, less capital expenditures, is about forty million dollars for this year. Sewer, we just, actually just had a rate increase, so they're in really good shape. The net for fiscal year twelve was three million dollars, but they had a rate increase, so things are improving for them. And they're, you know, they have a lot of capital improvements that they need to do. If you're on North Virginia Street, you can see that big project going on. And they're actually in good shape. That is one area where we're in very good shape on. And that's Mr. Flansburgh you can thank for that.
So out of all the doom and gloom, we do come forward with solutions. And those of you fortunate enough to inherit the council priorities that were set, this solution to create strategies that foster economic progress and stability is one of those strong priorities that the council did adopt during their planning session. And so under that solution or priority, we have identified five critical components that we are building and currently working on developing and actively pursuing, and that includes the funding for services, looking at our assets, getting our debt under control and seeing what we can do to reduce our expenditures around that. And then I mentioned looking at reserves and replenishing those items, and then future and current employee liability is one of those items that we'll take a look at. And I'll go through these in a little more detail in the rest of the slides, but I do want to leave you guys some time for questions, so. Funding core services, this is what I mentioned earlier in regard to prioritizing what it is that we do, what is it that we should do, you know, how often, those types of things. We are looking at more clearly aligning our funding sources and those uses so that things are a little more streamlined and transparent for when people like me come in and try to wrap my head around the budget and where all of the funding sources are going and the utilization of those resources. And so we're doing a great job at progressively looking to make that a little more clear. We are taking a look at diversifying our funding base. We're going to continue to target revenue streams. You'll see that we released transparency, around our transparency effort, we released an online checkbook, and that was in February, sorry, I keep forgetting that, in February, where you can go in and look at a department and drill down to see what their expenditures were. And then in June, I think it is, we anticipate showing the payroll piece of that, so you get to see what all of us fine folks here are making at the city of Reno. And in addition, what we've done is an all-hands effort around the departments, asking them, hey, what can we do to streamline processes? You know, you guys are on the front lines doing all this, it shouldn't, this decision shouldn't be made in a bubble. And really engaging the employees, we continue to do that around what are some of the things that we can improve? What are the processes that we can improve? You know, where can we save some resources? Because I think everybody at this point knows that we're a highly functioning system here at the city of Reno and that, you know, everybody's kind of in it for the right reasons, so it's been an all-hands, an all-team effort around figuring out what we can do to fund those core services, because that's what we're in the business of doing, is refine those services to the citizenry.
Okay. Yeah. One of the things we're doing is developing an asset management approach, making sure we maximize what assets we do have. That's primarily what we're looking at, is equipment, building, and land. One of the things we're doing is consolidating offices into this building, 1E1, 1 East First Community development, which is out on Sinclair, up by the old city hall, is going to be moving into this facility. We're kind of moving people around within this building. And then we can lease or sell the Sinclair building. We're also looking at other parcels we may have that we don't really need to utilize. Of course, a lot of our assets, land, our parks, or fire stations, or drainage facilities, so it's not like we're going to be able to sell off a park or a drainage facility. That's what our role and purpose is, but we want to make sure what we have is what we really need to have. So we're coming up with that strategic real estate plan, deferring assets when appropriate, and identifying and selling any excess equipment, whether it's even excess furniture or rolling stock vehicles. And then refined debt management plan. What we're looking at is, and what we have already done, is gone through with our bond advisor and bond counsel and our financial advisory board, which is our citizens' finance board, and looked at all of our debt and said, what can we do? Is there anything we can do for each of these bond issues? We have about forty of those bonds that you saw, where, are, about forty of them are outstanding. Is there anything we can do on any of them to improve our position, reduce our payments, reduce our costs, anything at all? And so we've got a couple ideas we're going to look at and do a little more research on and go forward with. And so that's something we're trying to do, is looking at maximizing it and making sure everything is as appropriate as possible.
So I mentioned the large chunk of our budget being personnel. And so one of the things we need to do around those liabilities that we have, the unfunded liabilities with the workers' compensation and the other post-employment benefits, is we can establish a trust where any resources that we dedicate via a fund policy or the mechanism can go into that trust, and it can only be used for the sole purpose of paying down that obligation. And so that is a GASB recommended, which is an accounting standard, recommended principle, and we haven't had one to this point. So that's one of those small steps that we can take to further ourselves in that regard. We are, as I mentioned, looking at future employee benefits. What do we need to do around those so that when folks come to the city to work, they have an expectation around, you know, it's not going to be perhaps as rosy as it always has been, you know, it's, I think the days are long gone of the cush government job, that's for sure. But I think that there are some areas that we can focus in on that don't have grave impact to the employees and that really can help us align those resources. Our city attorney's office has taken management of our risk fund, our risk management fund, and done a great job at really getting that in alignment and kind of hitting that hard. So that's been a really good area for us to plan to fund for some of these liabilities. And then, as always, we need to take a hard and fast look at legislative changes that we can do throughout all five of these principles and come up with a strategic legislative plan so that we can best use our time every other year when we go to session, so that we can make the changes necessary, because there are some provisions that prohibit us from moving forward fiscally, just because there are laws or statutes or administrative code provisions that are in place that have prohibited us from doing that. So I talked a little bit about future employee liability. And so what I really wanted to leave everybody thinking about was that, you know, we're not out of the woods yet. The path is not an easy one that we're taking, but we are committed to it, and you have a very strong city manager and executive staff that are looking to drive us in the right direction and better position the city in the future for, again, us to weather a significant, if equal, if not more, economic downturn. And so with that, I'm going to open it up, I think, to questions, but thank you all again for your interest in the position, and we look forward to potentially working with some of you in the future.
Yeah, I don't know that they told you we're recording this, I guess, so, against my better judgment and my express wishes not to be photoed, so.
Are you honest?
Yes, I am.
Are you?
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you. I have a question with regards to the trust fund that you say you're going to establish with regards to the post-employment benefits. Where is that in the process and how do you see that being funded?
Well, that's something we're, we have no way to fund it right now. It's not in the budget, but what we're looking for is, oh, we got another one, oh, good. As we get more, whenever we, our view is whenever we have excess revenues in an area, we would like to start putting into that, those trusts to pay down those liabilities. We have not established that trust at this time. We're just working on the budget for 2013, and as we develop that, we're going to see what kind of resources we have to apply to, whether it's the OPEB liability, the workers' comp liability, or any other of our unfunded liabilities. And then, of course, council will prioritize which ones will be the priority.
My question, my, okay, my question is about the effective rates of the bonds that you have, and if they're all fixed or variable rates, and if you've been involved in swaps, and I know the city has been, it's been a very difficult time, I guess, for swaps. Could you explain a little bit about how that's structured?
We actually have a mix of variable rate and fixed rate bonds, and we do have two bonds with swaps. Actually, the retract bonds have a swap on them, and the downtown event center bonds have a swap on them. And as you know, the interest rates are so low right now that to unwind those swaps would be probably twenty, thirty million dollars, which would be cost prohibitive. The ones that are variable rates, there are a couple of them, they're usually tied, most of them are tied to the LIBOR, which actually at this time has been very good, LIBOR is about a quarter of a percent. So that's, that's the good news. But, and they're capped at the top end also, depending on the bond. Like I said, there's about forty bonds, so we have.
What about the general obligation bonds? What's the most?
Most of the general obligations are fixed, and when I say they're fixed, some of them will have multiple issues within them. So they're, the combined rate is variable depending on what year you're in, but they're all fixed-rate bonds.
And what's the effective rate? Average effective rate?
Hold on. For the general obligation bonds, effective interest rates are, for the street improvement bond is from three to five percent. Again, because depending on what the issue, the term of each of the bonds are when the bonds are issued, some of them are five-year, six-year, seven-year, et cetera. Pardon? Yeah, actually, do you want to maybe just, there's a lot of them.
Average effective rate?
Not, yeah, I have the, for each bond, but not combined total.
There's a lot of them.
There's a lot.
The question was, is the city, is the city band paid, the municipal band? And actually, they are volunteers. I believe there might be a small stipend for the conductor, the leader of the band, but that's minimal. The musicians are volunteers.
Yes, please.
Hi, for the record, I'm Christine Fay. I'm the Arts and Culture Manager and Resource Development Director. So the answer to the question is, we do have, for years, we paid the band members, but then last year, due to the economic downturn, we were very fortunate because Mac McGrannahan, who is our bandleader now, put together a volunteer band. At some point, we would hope to be able to pay the band members again, and so the donations that come in, we don't keep. Those go to the band members. So everything that's donated gets put right back out to the band.
Long enough, just so people know that the band's not getting paid.
No, no, that's, that's very true. And they do get a stipend at the end of the season, and last year they were able to get some money because we were able to raise some money through grants and then also the obvious donations that you just mentioned. So anyone who loves the band should absolutely donate to it because it's one of the fun things that our city has had for many, many, many years.
Any other questions?
About code enforcement with the police, does that, that come out of the city, the code enforcement, or is that your guys' property?
City.
Do you have any involvement involved?
We work, we collaborate all the time. We work with special bands or any major projects, stuff like that, they're working on, there's usually a team of us that kind of work together.
I want to suggest that you guys have done a great job over the last three years. I know it's been really challenging and having to cut the budgets and lay off folks, and I suspect, not to say we're out of the woods yet, but there's certainly a lot of the heartache is hopefully behind us. Though I would assume, though, there's still some room for some efficiencies within our government. What action steps are being, are being taken to, again, attempt to be as efficient as possible so that we will find some reserves to put towards some of those unfunded liabilities?
We actually have a lean, what we call a lean process improvement that we went through, and I don't know, John, do you want to talk about, since you are most familiar with that? This is John Flansburgh, our Director of Public Works, and we've gone through this process, and actually, we're identifying other areas where we can go through the same process. So, John, you want us to speak to what we have done?
Thank you. For the record, I'm kind of used to saying that. John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works. For the lean process, we take a look, and it works really best if you're looking at things that you do often. So it's daily or multiple times a day. And if you're looking for a particular result, like trying to lower the cost, reduce waste, improve efficiency, those types of things. So one of the items that we use that on was the business license approach, went through the business license, how can we expedite that process, reduce the number of steps that have to be taken with that, deliver a better customer service, and reduce costs. And so that was one of the items that we take. One of the ones that came, we have one more process improvement that we're going to be going in with a certain consultant that we're using, but the idea behind using this consultant was after three processes, training people internally, so we can be doing some of these things internally. So the last one we're going to be looking at, we're going to define what that is, but a couple of items that came up is our accounts receivable, making sure how that process goes. There might be some ways we can improve efficiencies in that area. So those are some of the things that we have done to look at that, as well as a myriad of things that we've looked at the last several years in our operations.
I have a question back here.
For our Assistant Police Chief, how many outlying areas do you have to patrol, and what is the coverage in those areas, like STED and things like that?
Well, typically, yeah, so STED is, we usually have one to two officers out there at any given time, and the way our supervisors kind of staff the streets is to make sure that we keep, we get enough people coming in that northern area that if they, if they need more resources, we can get it up there fairly quick. But for the most part, majority of our time is spent down in the majority of the city area. You know, we're obviously growing south, where we grew south, so we spend a lot of time, you know, down all the way to the Double Diamond area, so.
About how many outlying areas are there that you have to cover?
Well, we cover, really, almost, and there's pieces that we cover almost to the state line if you go west, and then you, we've got some parts of Cold Springs to the north. We go, you know, as far south, you know, down to almost the Mount Rose Highway, you know, in some areas. So, I mean, it's a, you know, it's a pretty big, you know, it's a hundred and five square mile geographical area. Any given shift, we may have a total of maybe thirty officers deployed, you know, throughout that area. But they're always out, driving around, you know, waiting for those calls, responding to those calls.
Thanks.
Okay. A number of times I've heard people use the phrase managed competition as one of the strategies you're hoping to employ that will give us some advantages. Can you elaborate a little bit as to how you envision using that concept and what areas of government it might be used in?
Be happy to fill that one. So managed competition, what you do with that, there's a couple of ways you can look at doing that. Some people call it outsourcing. And kind of the difference between the managed competition process and an outsourcing process is sometimes in outsourcing, you just put a service out to contract, and you compare the quotes you have coming in from that versus the costs that you have in your, in your own internal operations. Compare the two and see if there's a benefit in actually outsourcing that versus retaining that in-house. The difference with managed competition is you actually first focus on your internal operation and see what, if there's anything you can do to improve on that operation and make it as efficient as you possibly can first. And then, once you've accomplished that and you've established a little bit of history, a few months or so, depending on what the operation is, then you go out and you bid the same service and make sure that things line up, that the same service is being bid with the one that you're providing internally. And then, based on the cost there, then you make the decision from that.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Klinger, so as you know, the legislature casts a really large shadow over everything that the city of Reno does, and I was just wondering if you saw any opportunities in the future where the city can beef up its ability to correspond and work with legislators, hopefully so that they can pass laws or do things that can help us with some of these long-term budget issues?
We actually, one of my assistant city managers is Cadence Matievich, who is in charge of our government relations, and part of Cadence's job is to establish those relationships with the Washoe delegation. And one of the things that we've done is we've invited the Washoe delegation to come in every month, and we update them on issues that we have, get their feedback on items. And so it's really more, it's about communication and developing relationships with them. I mean, I don't know if you're, if you have something specific that you're looking for other than that, or?
No, that's kind of what I was hoping to say.
And we keep our, again, not all of our delegation is on that committee, so we keep them informed on what our position is, you know, moving forward on those issues.
I have a question here.
I'm curious, has the city entertained the idea of making a move to home rule as opposed to DILANS?
I think that idea's been floated many, many times. Cadence, if you want to come up and fill in on that. You know, I'm fortunate enough to have experience both now at the local level and at the state level, and I think it would be a challenge to get the legislature to ever give up that authority and give it to the, to local government. And Cadence, if you want to add to that.
Pick your battles, I guess is the best way to summarize that. There has been a lot of talk about home rule in the past couple of legislative sessions. There was a bill in the 2011 session that had to do with a component of home rule and what they called functional home rules, so kind of our day-to-day operations, and was there an appetite at the legislature, even just to give us that piece? And I will tell you that unfortunately, that was met with a great deal of resistance. And I think, given where we are today, you know, the unfortunate circumstances that the state and local government have found themselves in, you know, some of the financial policies of our local government and other local governments throughout the state unfortunately have left the legislature with a lack of confidence in local government's ability to behave responsibly. Not that necessarily we deserve that, but that's the reality of the situation. I mean, I sort of joked with them, in the testimony on that functional home rule bill, I said, you know, "Give us our learner's permit." And they said, "Nope, we're terrified, you get to stay in the backseat." So, you know, as we look at the ways that we can do things, and I think to Mr. Kelly's question, we've taken a little bit different approach of, you know, for a long time, there has been a push to separate ourselves and say, "Let us operate independently," and that perhaps, given where we are today, that a more productive strategy would be to engage them, educate them as to the challenges that we face, and make them part of the solutions around that, rather than distancing ourselves from them.
In any organization, obviously, communication is key. How often does staff meet with council members, and is it as a, on the whole, or is it individually? What is that process?
We're meeting with council members, and it really depends on the issue. I mean, I meet with the council members on a regular basis. You know, we really want the council members to funnel their requests through me, because if I'm going to be held accountable for the actions of the organization, I really need to know what's going on. But council does reach out occasionally to staff to find out the status of a project and inquire where we are on something. So we're in regular communication, you know, with the council members. I have standing meetings with all of them at least once a month, just to go over issues and, you know, update them on projects that are of interest particularly to them.
I want to say something with the candidates. You don't realize what a great education we're giving. In the last century, I ran with this job as the council three times. I got one bronze and two silver.
You paid your money, and you walked out the door, and that was it. Okay? You had to make your own signs, you didn't know where to put them, you didn't get any information at all. When I checked with the city clerk, she gave me this nice little brochure of what to do. You guys are very fortunate, I want to commend, congratulate you guys for doing a good job with this. We all need this.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? If not, we have staff that'll stick around afterwards, if you want to ask them questions individually. And thanks again for being here, and thanks again for running.